I'd like to call this meeting no order. Ms. Eileen?
Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, March 26, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 9, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
All set?
All set.
I'd like to ask Mr. Hughes, who would be joining the board, to please step in the well and meet me there for the oath of office.
(inaudible) 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 And for the record, Mr. Hughes will be filling in for John Kyle Turk. He'll have the balance of his unexpired term, so please join us. (inaudible)
And Matt, I just need that sign. Wait a minute. And then you can give me the other form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it back over to you as soon as Mr. Hughes joins the...
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Could we have a roll call?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armada?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente has been excused. Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Wendell Nansen has been excused. And Chairman Posh?
Here.
And just in the absence of the chairman and the vice chair, you are now chair tonight, but now we need a secretary if you would please...
I think Mr. O'Donnell would like to fill that position tonight.
Yes, I will.
Perfect, thank you.
Before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to make mention of two things. A former member, Ken Allen, died this past week. He was a member of this board, he was a longtime resident, he was a father, he was a good man, and I know him not as well as many people around here. He lived down the street from me, I'd like to mention that. And also that our chairman is in hospital with a broken wrist and a broken hip. If you keep in your thoughts and prayers. Let's do our Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 The record should reflect that Mr. Conlitt, Mr. Mallon, Helen Stavich tonight is our planner, and Matt Howard have all been sworn for the allegiance of the chair. Thank you.
We need to approve some minutes. Anybody like to make a motion in that direction?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
That's for February 12th, correct?
Yes.
Yes, February 12th, 2018 meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Armada?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Posh?
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes are memorialized.
We need to approve the minutes for the February 26, 2018 meeting as well. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Could we have a roll call, please?
May. Mr. Armada?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Posh?
Yes.
Thank... Motion carries, thank you.
Do we have any vouchers or correspondence?
We have no vouchers and no correspondence.
We need to vote on a resolution for case number BA 17-16 Majak Properties, Inc. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Ms. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Armada?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
And Chairman Posh?
Yes. Case number BA 0911A Dominic Amarino. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Ms. Eileen, a roll call, please.
Mr. Armada?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Chairman Posh?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized, thank you.
First application tonight is case BA 1803 Clearview Equities LLC. Application of Clearview Equities LLC is applicant and Helen Tosh as owner seeking bulk variance approval to construct a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling on a lot not serviced by central sewer on premises known as Block 24, Lot 5, Alexander Avenue.
So I don't know how you want to mark it.
This isn't marked.
No. So when I talk, I can cooperate to this?
Yes, sir.
It's different, this is different than before.
I just need the plans that you submit right now. The other you have to enter.
Okay.
That's acceptable.
That's great. The addition to the website with all the information. Whoever did...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals. My name is Jeffrey Chang from the law firm of Halbrum Pape. I have the pleasure of representing Clearview Equities this evening. I'd like to first confirm with the board's attorney that proper notice was provided and the board has jurisdiction to hear this matter. Great. So the applicant this evening, we're seeking bulk variance, and we're also the contract purchaser of property located at Lot 5, Block 24. It's approximately 14,533 square feet, located in the R2 zoning district. Due to property not being serviced by sewer, the ARE1 zoning district parameters govern this property. And the applicant this evening is requesting bulk variance relief to permit the development of the property as a one, two-story, four-bedroom, single-family home. The following bulk variances are required in order to develop this property as proposed. Minimum lot area of 14,533 square feet or 20,000 square feet is required. Front yard setback of 33.5 feet is proposed where 50 feet is required. Rear yard setback of 31.1 feet is proposed where 40 feet is required. And a side yard setback of 21.4 feet is proposed where 30 feet is required. And as you'll hear from our professionals this evening, this is an undersized lot that if it were to be subject to the ARE1 setbacks, the property, I like to say, would be zoned into inutility. You could not build a single-family home that would be consistent with the homes surrounding this property. It's the last vacant parcel, I believe, in the block 24 in this area. And there's no additional land for us to cure the bulk variance request this evening. There are homes built on all adjacent sides of this home. And the applicant is proposing, as you'll see from our architect, a modest home that's going to be consistent with the surrounding homes in the area, similar type of facade, similar size, similar dimensions, garage layout, things of that nature. And the bedrooms are also consistent with the general area as well. So with that being said, I'd like to call our first witness, our civil engineer, have him qualified and so he can testify for expert engineering.
If he could give his qualifications first?
Right. Jeffrey, what I'd like to do, just for the ease of tonight's presentation, is how many witnesses do you have?
Three.
Okay. And what I'd like you to do is if we could call them all up, let me swear them all in and then you can proceed with your presentation.
Absolutely.
Folks, would you raise your right hand, please? You swear that the testimony you're giving this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you've got.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
And sir, starting with you, may we have your name, please?
My name is Jonathan C. Blank.
Spelling of your last name, please? Thank you.
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N.
Thank you.
Stephen Radosti, R-A-D-O-S-T-I.
Also, R-A-D...
O-S-T-I.
Thank you. All sworn, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Forgive me if I'm... If I need a little guidance here, I'm new at this. If we could have this gentleman's qualifications now?
Absolutely.
I am a graduate from Rutgers University from May of 2012 with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I had been working at Crest Engineering for five years, and I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
That works for me. Anybody? Everybody go with that? Proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Blank, can you, I guess with the exhibits that we have here, we have reduced copies. Counselor Tropley, may I mark these into exhibit? There's shrunk-down versions of what you're presenting right now.
Your next marking, Jeffrey, is a 15?
Okay.
And... Oh, I beg your pardon. I have 810.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
Need another one?
All right. 810, beg your pardon. And if you would just have your witness put in description.
Okay.
On the record. Our secretary might just...
That's fine, thank you.
This exhibit is an aerial display dated March 23, 2018. It is an aerial view of the property showing its relation to the adjacent residential properties within 500 feet.
Thank you. Mr. Blank, can you tell us a little bit more about what is existing on this property currently?
Thank you, my dear. Yes. The existing property is a .33 acre property that is currently in the R2 zone. The property is currently wooded and is surrounded by properties developed with single-family
And I'm going to mark Counselor Tropley, A11, a, I guess, how would you, a site display prepared by Crest. So I had this again. And Mr. Blank, can you explain to the board what it is that we're proposing and also discuss the septic and well locations on this property?
Of course. We are proposing a two-story, single-family dwelling with a proposed septic system and well.
And have you followed the guidelines for septic design? Are the soils suitable? Just drive the location a bit as well?
Yes, we, with regards to the septic system, we encountered sandy soils and a very deep water table. We performed an Oprah request to determine the locations of all the existing septic systems and wells on the adjacent properties in order to properly locate the proposed septic system and well and dwelling to meet all the required separation distances. And the driveway is proposed to have access from Alexander Avenue and will drain from the building directly to Alexander Avenue.
And I'm sure we'll go through the TNN report dated March 7, 2018, but could you first make some comments about the stormwater runoff questions that I believe Mr. Mallon drew to our attention and what some of our proposed solutions to this may be?
Yes. There was concern with runoff from the roof and driveway draining onto the adjacent properties. With regard to the driveway, the driveway runoff will drain from the building directly to Alexander Avenue. With regards to the roof runoff, there was a comment to provide groundwater recharge. And during the initial design of the plans, we did look into providing a dry well to provide this recharge. However, there are certain separation distances that you must provide from your septic systems and your wells, and we could not provide that separation distance. I consulted with the board engineer regarding the comment, and we are going to provide rain gardens downstream of the downspouts where runoff will drain from the roof runoff outlet onto a splash block and will drain to a rain garden where there will be a chance for the runoff to seep through the mulch and infiltrate into the ground to provide some runoff mitigation.
Excuse me, is that the case, Jack? A dry well for roof water has to be a minimum from a septic?
Pardon?
Is that the case? There's a minimum distance from a dry well to a septic system?
Yeah, we always try to get recharge, and sometimes the high water table or, in this case, because the lot and the location, you have to be 50 feet away with a dry well. So what they do is they'll take and put it into a planting area, the roof runoff, that'll help plant, water the flowers, and it helps recharge. That's usually how we do that.
I've called a lot of each, and I didn't know there was a minimum separation. Okay.
Yeah, there is, from a dry well to the septic system, 50 feet.
Okay. Did you, you said you checked for neighboring wells and what have you. Can you maintain 100 feet to each one from the septic on this house?
We can, yes.
Okay. Proceed.
Mr. Posh, if they can't, then they have to take care of double-cased wells. That's by the health code, state code. But the locals can issue permits, but if they can't maintain the distance, then they have to put double-case well, not only for them, but their neighbors.
You're talking about minimum for the wells now, not...
The minimum well from the septic's normally 100 feet.
Right.
You can go down to 50, but then you have to have double-case wells.
Okay.
On our property, we do meet that separation distance for our septic system. And to allow the well to be constructed on the property, we are proposing a cased well which can be constructed within 50 feet of the septic system.
Another question. You talked about concerns with where the water is going to run off to. Where does that lot drain to now? Does it go straight towards the street now?
So there's a portion of the runoff drains to the southeastern corner of the property, and another portion that drains to the road. We try to maintain the existing drainage patterns as much as possible.
When you say southeast, you mean it hits the street at the southeast corner? It doesn't go to the southeast neighbor?
In existing conditions, it goes to, this portion of it does go to the southeast corner.
Okay. And it should pretty much keep doing that?
Yes.
Or no, it's going to go, now it's going to go north to the, to the street, correct?
Yeah, the driveway will drain to the street, and we're going to, at least half the runoff is going to drain directly to the street.
So this is good news for the guy on the southeast corner?
Mr. Chairman, that's the extent of my direct questioning to Mr. Blank. He will be here for further questioning and also as we go through the report, as Mr. Mallon goes through it.
Mr. Chairman?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question regarding the well and the septic. How many feet is it on your property between the two? Between our proposed well and our proposed disposal field? Right. It is approximately 60 feet. 60, so that, like you said, you'll have a double-case well? Correct. And what about to the neighbors, to the left and to the right? From their well and septic tank, how many feet are they? So from our septic systems, or disposal field, that is, we have at least 50 feet from the adjacent disposal field, and I believe at least 100 feet from all the adjacent wells. With regard to the cased well, the closest septic system is the one that we're proposing on our property, which is at least 60 feet away. So we meet that 50-foot separation distance. So Mr. Mallon, that 50 feet would be okay for all three properties to have a double-case well?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could you describe what a double-case well is, because I'm not familiar with it?
It's like a, it's like a well encased in steel to provide, essentially, it's like a, it provides better protection so that way you don't start polluting your well water.
You said it won't allow infiltration north of the screen.
Right, depending on...
And it's, I guess it would be if it went through the ground to the screen, it would be filtered.
It's a casing within the casing. Normally, you just do a single case down. If you don't have that, and the health department has a rule, they look how far down they have to go, but a lot of times it's, they have to put 25 feet of a casing around the casing that, as he said, minimizes how much water can infiltrate from the septic into the well. It has to go much deeper, and when it goes deeper...
It gets filled.
Then it becomes a, the soil purifies the water.
Okay. I'm learning a lot tonight. Go ahead.
No further questions for Mr. Blank, but he's available for further questioning.
Gentlemen, will we have questions for this engineer?
I just have one question. I don't know if you have the gentleman to answer it. All of the lots surrounding lots around this property, are they all pretty much equal in size?
And actually, if I may, the planner will be able to describe the adjacent homes in this area, and we actually have photos to show you also. As we compare the architect's plans that we'll present to you, we'll be comparing to what is existing here, so you'll have a better feel of the consistency of what we're proposing and with the current environment of the property.
Exactly what I wanted.
Okay, perfect. What would answer that? So if I may, may I call the architect, Mr. Radosti, to present plans?
Mr. Chairman, before he goes on, Mr. Blank, you have any problem with amending the details in the plan as I requested in my letter to put on the ARE1 requirements?
I have...
You do that, and you'll also make sure that the architect's plan and your plot plan agree, because right now they don't.
Of course.
Okay.
I have one more question. It seems like we're having trouble getting our separation like we'd like it. Would it be safe to say that that's probably the case on several, if not all, of these other lots?
It is possible with such small lots that, yeah, you...
I know it's possible. Is it the case?
That, I believe...
To the best of your knowledge, if you don't know, you don't know.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, yes, with very small lots and...
They're all undersized, I believe, I'll defer to the engineer, but I believe there's a number of homes in this block that are undersized and violate, had variance issues if we were, if they were not built or written as of today's date.
What I'm getting at is we're having trouble getting minimums in more than one instance here to your own septic, to his septic, his. But if this lot is the same size as the rest of them, it's probably the case throughout the neighborhood, is my question. Jack, do you have something to add?
Yeah, just keep in mind, any, first, we don't have jurisdiction over the Board of Health requirements...
Right.
...which comes from the state. Any approval that we would grant for this applicant would be subject to that approval. We've had cases down in this area before, and you know what? If they can't comply with the Board of Health, their approval that we give is null and void. They can't use it. They have to comply with that, or they have to come to some agreement with the state. If they can't maintain the 50 feet and the double case, then they have to submit to Trenton, to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and then they would make the determination on what they would do to allow this to continue. I mean, prime example is, look at Freewood Acres. You know, I mean, until they're, I think they're getting the process of doing sewers there, but pretty much there, it's well and septic, and they're tiny, tiny lots, and a lot of those that came in later had to go to the state to get special permission. So it can be done, but the state kind of controls that. So all we're doing is giving a variance from the zoning regulations, and then they have to comply with our requirements, and that would be to comply with the Health Department requirements.
Okay.
Okay?
Architect, is that...
No, no, we're good, proceed.
Mr. Radosti, could you give your credentials so you can sworn in to be an expert witness in architecture?
Yes. My name's Stephen Radosti. I'm a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey. I have, I graduated from NGIT School of Architecture in 1992, became a licensed architect in 1996. I'm a principal at Perez and Radosti Associates, and I presented in front of dozens of boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including Howell Township.
We comfortable with that, gentlemen? Proceed.
Thank you.
Mr. Radosti, you have the elevations for the proposed home. Could you walk us through the floor plan, the square footage, and the general materials that we're proposing? And also the height of the building as well?
Yes, of course. I have here sheet CS1.
What is our exhibit on? Do you want to mark this, or?
No.
Okay. I believe so, yeah.
This is a colorized version of what was previously submitted.
Yeah, it's A5. It was previously submitted.
So the building is a two-story, single-family residence. We have four bedrooms and two and a half baths with a one-car garage. The building height from grade to the midpoint or the average of the roof is approximately 26 feet above grade. We show here to the top of the ridge, but actually in Howell, it's measured to the average of the roof. So it would be under the 30-foot height. We have, on the front elevation, we have a cultured stone or other faux stone water table that runs up this element here to give some visual interest to it. We have horizontal siding as well as AZAC trim board or some other type of wood trim board or composite material. And the gables, we have a couple stacked gables, which we have a faux cedar shake to complement the horizontal siding. We have a porch in the front with several square columns and a decorative garage door at the front left portion of the building. As you enter the porch, you go into the foyer. Off of the foyer area, we have a powder room. You enter straight into the breakfast area, family room in the back of the house, the kitchen. And then we have a dining room off of the kitchen area. Also on this side, we have a one-car garage which steps up that also goes to the same foyer and then there's a laundry room in that area there. As you go upstairs to the second floor, we have a master bedroom as well as three other bedrooms. Each of them have closets. The master bedroom has two walk-in closets. We have a hall bathroom with sink, sinks with vanity, toilet, shower. And then in the master bedroom suite, we have a tub, his and her sinks, a shower and a toilet.
And the overall square footage, Mr. Rudasti, is?
So the overall square footage of living space is 2,707 square feet.
Okay. And then you also clarified the building height, which addresses, I believe, paragraph eight of Mr. Mallon's report. And the measurement is, could you describe again, the average?
Yes, it's from the grade in the front of the building to the average height of the roof, which is approximately 26 feet, which is less than 30 feet allowed.
Did you say 26 before?
Yes, I did.
And now you said 22?
Oh, no, no, it's still 26.
Okay.
And we just had, when we were looking at the report, I think it indicated a building height of 31 feet, nine inches. And then we looked at the ordinances to see how height was measured to make sure we didn't need a variance for that and we, I believe, Mr. Mallon, if you'll comment, we do not need a height variance.
No, I concur. If it's 26 feet to the average, then you're below the 30 feet that's allowed.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay.
That's my direct question to the architect, but I open up for questions to the board.
Gentlemen.
I just have one question. This is on a slab, no basement.
Actually, it's a partial basement, partial crawl space. So the portion, the portion on this side of the house, closest towards the septic field would be crawl space and this portion would be a full basement and then, of course, the garage would be on a slab.
What's the water table over there?
The water table. The water table is very deep. When we performed soil logs to assist in the design of the septic system, the water table was not encountered for more than 10 feet below ground.
And how far will the basement, you said partial basement, so what's it, six feet?
Well, partial basement, meaning it's only under a portion of the first floor.
A portion of the house, okay.
The basement would be approximately, probably about eight foot, seven, nine and a half to eight feet, somewhere along those lines. Whether or not we go with, I'm not sure if we're going to go with block or poured concrete yet, it'll make a slight difference.
Have there been test pits out there to find water?
Yes, when we design a, when we design a septic system, we perform test pits to document the soil that's on site and determine.
Do you know what the separation from your finished floor in the basement is to the seasonal high water table?
I believe it's greater than two feet.
Don't, do we have a standard in this town, Jack? I know some towns have four feet.
Well, they did a boring in the center of the house and they did two borings, I think, in the septic. They went down 120 inches, which is 10 feet, no water encountered. Our requirement in Howell is the basement floor must be two feet above the seasonal high water table. And we do ask, I'm sure Matt will concur, we make sure we get a boring at the house before we issue the permit.
We're in compliance with that.
Yep, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
If I may, I'd like to ask Ms. Coffin to testify as the planner. And this is going to be, I think, A12. These are photos, as I said, Mr. O'Donnell, the surrounding properties around us, we took photos of it, so you'll have a better feel of the community.
I have a smaller version of it to hand out so you can see them.
12 or 13?
12.
12.
When you look at the septic rules, when you look at the septic rules, and I know the architect didn't address it, but the septic system has to be 25 feet away from a structure. So when you look at this house and where they set the septic, at least 10 feet of it on the side of the septic will not be able to be a basement. So they'll need to do a crawl or something and then they'll have to do a half basement. I don't know if the architect was aware of that, but that's the requirements. Board of Health, when they see that, will pick it up, but that's something you got, so the board knows that the septic has to be 25 feet away from the structure. It's only 15 here, so that means if you had a basement, so the basement, 10 feet of it won't be able to be a basement on that side. Have to be either a crawl.
Engineer, though, that?
Can you just clarify, just clarify, because that's where the adjacent septic is.
Yes, and that was the reason why we only have a partial basement, is that the portion under the dining room and the kitchen here would be crawl space and then from this portion on would be basement and then we have the slab here. So we took that into account.
Crawl space, okay?
Excuse me?
They got a crawl in that area, is that?
Yeah, that's okay. Keep it a basement.
Okay.
And then they'll have to probably, the code tells you, it may have to be cemented too, I think, underneath in the crawl.
Yes, I believe, I believe so.
I've got a memory without reading it, but that's.
We'll take a look at that.
That's my recollection.
I have one question. The Environmental Commission wanted to know if there was a possibility of additional loading on the septic system if an additional bedroom was put in later on up in the attic. Is there any plans?
The plans for the house were to have roof trusses, which would be that we really can't add anything in the attic.
Okay, fine.
Because none of the walls on the second floor were planning on being bare.
That answers your question. Thank you.
If I could just add to that, too, if the applicant or the owner was to come in for building permits for an additional bedroom, I would review that and pending, they would have to get the Mountain County Board of Health approval for the additional bedroom, which would take into account the capacity of the septic. If they didn't have that, they would not get the permit to put in the bedroom.
Thank you, Matt.
I have one question. I have one question for you. Is there going to be a bathroom down in the basement at some point?
There may be. I haven't, we haven't proposed one. I wasn't planning on finishing the basement.
Okay.
You know, at this time, we're not, we haven't designed anything for the basement.
Okay, right now, you're not, okay.
And Mr. Howard, if I'm, this is accurate, please confirm, if we were to put a bathroom, for example, in the basement, it would have to go through your office to make sure.
Yes, we don't really have any restrictions on that. The bedroom is the one that dictates the size of the septic. For an additional bathroom, it would ultimately be building permits.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Thanks. So Ms. Coffin, can you provide your background and your credentials so they can swear you in as an expert witness in planning?
Sure. Hi, my name's Allison Coffin. I work for James W. Higgins Associates out of Ocean Township, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have been licensed and certified for 14 years now. In that time, I've been accepted as an expert in front of more than 80 communities throughout the state. I have appeared here in Howell quite a few times. Thank you.
Ms. Coffin, could you, if you could do in a narrative, help us justify the C1 and also possibly the C2, both variances?
Sure. The site that we're looking at tonight is a 14,533-square-foot lot. It's got frontage on Alexander Avenue and it's currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to construct a single-family home on this vacant property. This property is located in an area that is predominantly single-family residential development and it's located on Block 24, which is located between Alexander Avenue and Larrabee Boulevard. And it's a somewhat unique area. It's like a little pocket of undersized lots in an area that's predominantly much larger lot, single-family residential development. Now, the lots on this block within 200 feet of the subject site are all undersized for the zone, which requires 40,000-square-foot lots, for lots which are not serviced by central sewer. There are eight lots within 200 feet of this property on Block 24, all of which are less than half the required lot area. I handed out a copy of A12, which was prepared mostly to show you the character of the existing homes, but it also shows the lots in the surrounding area. So you can see the subject site. It's in the center of this area of undersized lots. It's consistent with the existing lot size pattern on that block. And the lots in this area range from Lot 2, which is 17,899 square feet, down to Lot 3, which is 13,360 square feet. So all of these lots are less than 20,000-square-feet in area and the lot size that we're looking at tonight falls well within the range of this existing pattern. The site's in the R2 residential zone. The proposed home is a permitted use in this zone and as the site is not serviced by central sewer, the site is required to comply with the area and setback standards of the ARE1 zone and that's why we're here tonight requesting variance relief. The lot area required is 40,000 square feet and the existing lot is 14,533 square feet. The front yard setback required in the ARE1 zone is 50 feet and the applicant's requesting 33.5 feet. The side yard setback required is 30 feet and we're requesting 21.4. And lastly, the rear yard that's required is 40 feet and we're asking for 31.1 feet. Now, the variance relief for lot area and setbacks are known as the bulk or the C standard. There are two tests within the municipal land use law for this type of relief. The first is commonly known as the hardship variance, it's the C1 standard. And this is appropriate when something such as a lot's unique shape, its topographic conditions or the result of legal pre-existing structures creates a situation where a strict application of the ordinance would result in an undue hardship. The second standard, the C2 standard, sometimes called the flexible C variance, is justified when the purposes of the municipal land use law are being advanced by the requested variances and the benefits of the requested variances substantially outweigh any detriments that are associated with them. It's my opinion that the variance relief we're looking at tonight can be granted under both the C1 and the C2 standard. So looking at it first, under the C1 hardship standard, we have a subject site that has an area of 14,533 square feet. This is a pre-existing condition. There's no additional land available to increase the lot to a conforming size as all the adjacent lots are fully developed. Absent relief for lot area in this case, then, the lot has been zoned completely into inutility and this is very clearly a hardship situation. Next, looking at that front and rear yard setback variance. The subject site has a depth that ranges from 96.21 feet all the way up to 108.49 feet. The required front yard of 50 feet and that required rear yard of 40 feet results in a, combined is 90 feet, results in a usable area of the site that ranges in depth from 10 feet to 15 feet, which is not sufficient depth to develop the lot with a functioning single-family home. So in this case, relief is necessary from the front and rear yard setback to allow for a reasonable depth of livable, single-family structure. And lastly, we have that side yard setback variance. The home in this case has to be moved off the center of the lot to one side in order to provide the setbacks that are required for the septic field, both to the home itself and to the field on the adjacent lot. This pushes that home a few feet into the required side yard setback on the eastern side of the lot. So there's a little relief hardship necessary for that side yard setback variance as well. The variances can also be granted under the flexible C standard. The proposed home advances the purposes of the municipal land use law with regard to promoting the establishment of an appropriate population density and concentration that would contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities and regions and preservation of the environment, as well as to provide sufficient space in an appropriate location for residential use. The subject site is located on a block which is unique, where the other lots are undersized and developed with single-family homes in a density that is consistent with what the applicant's proposing for this lot. The use of this undersized lot for a development with a four-bedroom home is consistent, therefore, with the population density of this unique neighborhood. The benefits of the variance in this case allow for the appropriate and proper development of the land at this last vacant parcel within this residential neighborhood. Looking at the detriments, the proposed lot is consistent with the character of the surrounding lots on Block 24, so there's no harm to the character of the area. The front and rear yard setbacks are consistent with the setbacks of the adjacent homes on the adjacent lots. So there's no detriment to light air and open space or the character of the area from those setbacks. The size of the proposed dwelling is appropriate, reasonable and consistent with the character of the nearby homes. And that side yard setback, though it's not consistent with the ARE1 standard, which is scaled to a minimum 40,000-square-foot lot, does exceed the 20-foot side yard setback required in the R2 zone in which the lot is located when you have a 20,000-square-foot lot, which indicates the setback proposed in this case is appropriate, given the undersized nature of the lot. So in this case, it's my opinion that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments. Now, the last test for a variance is whether or not it would impair the intended purpose of the master plan or the zoning ordinance. Now, the purpose of the R2 zone, as identified in the master plan, is to permit infill development at moderate densities within the established centers identified in Howell Township's master plan. The proposed development in this case is consistent with that purpose because it's an infill development of the last vacant parcel in this area. The subject site being that last vacant parcel in the area is unique and limited to this area of undersized lots without sewer connection in the R2 zone and the variance relief that's requested for this last vacant lot in the area would not substantially impair the intended purpose of the larger zone as a whole.
I have nothing further for Ms. Coffin.
Does our planner have any questions?
Yeah, I definitely agree with the large balance of what Ms. Coffin said. I just had, I was curious about the size of the actual home. Is the square footage of what's being proposed similar to the square footage of surrounding homes?
So I pulled up, I went through the tax records and pulling up the property card, you can see the area of the homes that are heated. What was interesting is the smallest home in the area is on the largest lot. So Lot 2 has a home that's only 836 square feet in area with one bedroom. But the homes in this area, most of them are much larger. We have a couple over 2,000 square feet in area. The largest one is on Lot 8 and it's 2,458 square feet of heated area and that's for a three-bedroom home. So what's proposed is in character with the area.
In character, but on the larger side of.
Again, because I'm looking at what's heated as opposed to how our architect calculated habitable area, so I'm not sure if it's larger or if it appears larger because the tax records are looking at the floor area differently than our architect is.
Okay. Yep.
Well, what is the heated area on a proposed house? 2707, right?
Okay, so it's 350 square feet, 250 square feet.
We're going to hit the bedrooms, right?
Yes, yes.
And I guess could you just elaborate as well, Ms. Coffin, the bedrooms in the general, in this area, what were the range?
You know, I'm sorry, I did read this wrong. The area I gave you was for a three-bedroom home. It is not the largest home in the surrounding area. There is a larger home that's 2,632 square feet and that's for a four-bedroom home.
So we're 70.
70 square feet.
Larger than that, that home.
And the homes in this area are, there's one one-bedroom, three three-bedrooms and four four-bedrooms.
Don't know.
Yeah, my thought process was just that, you know, if the septic, there's a lot to fill on this lot between where the septic field has to be and the setbacks and everything and if the house is a little bit larger than what's expected, if it was a little bit, you know, smaller, would you have more room to play with? But if it's overall, if you're finding that it's overall consistent with what's already there, then, yeah, I'm set.
Jack?
Mr. Chairman, just for edification, just so they know, when you deal with impervious coverage, they're allowed to have 15%. They're at 13.6. And when you look at building coverage, they're allowed 12% and they're, they have 9.25. So as far as those type of regulations, they fit right, they fit right in, they don't violate that. I do have a couple of questions for Allison. In your testimony, you said that it fits in, the area, the area you're talking about is the area for the R2 zone area, is that correct? 20,000, not 40?
Yes.
I mean, it's required 40,000 because there's no sewer, but the R2 says 20,000.
Yes.
That, this is 14,000, what you're saying, the other lots in the area are pretty comparable to that and the block and everything?
The lots on this block are all less than 20,000 square feet. The lots on this block within 200 feet.
Okay. And so you, if you looked at the R2, you comply with the rear and side setback, it's the front setback and the area you don't comply with, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question for, I don't know if you or for Jeffrey, I apologize, I don't have your last.
No problem. Chang, C-H-A-N-G.
Okay, okay. Of course, I know Mr. Pape very well, but you, I do not.
Yeah, no.
In your application, you asked for waiver from fire and utility fees and Board of Health. You realize we can't do that.
Understood.
We can't, we are not empowered to waive fees.
Right.
And we can't waive the Board of Health application. It'll be, if anything approved, it would be subject to Board of Health approval.
Absolutely. And then I believe we also did post, I'd like to confirm with Ms. Rubano, but the fire bureau review fee we did provide, is that? But yeah, understood, the utility department.
You have to pay it, so don't, just so you understand that.
Absolutely.
We can't waive that. This is an isolated lot, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Undersized, do you have, did you do any buy-sell letters or any proof to see if somebody wanted to buy or sell your property?
I did not.
You did not?
We can certainly do that as a, if the board were so inclined to approve this as a condition of approval. The reason I did not write a letter was because we have developed lots all around us, so that's.
Well, but somebody might buy yours.
They certainly could, yeah.
I realize that if they're developed. I realize that if they're developed, and I realize if you, if you do the buy-sell, you only have to buy enough of somebody's lot to make yours conform. But of course, to conform to 40,000, you're going to buy somebody's, and then, and more. I understand that, but I just didn't know if you had done that.
No.
And I don't know if you did anything to show whether this was an isolated lot, was created under subdivision before, wasn't part of any other...
Actually, we, so during one of our prep meetings, we were trying to dig about the history of the property to make sure it wasn't self-created hardship, and it is not, because I believe, and I believe Allison helped me find this...
Nope.
Or was that John?
Yes.
Okay. There was, it looks, it appears that there was a subdivision that was filed in 1955 that created this lot.
Okay.
So it was on...
And that was, and that was before the ordinance?
Yeah.
Just as a little backup to that point, I happen to have the 1979 zoning map, which is the first zoning map that showed parcels on it. We're generally in this area, and it looks like these lots have been created by 1979, just as background.
It's very common, believe me, we've had a lot of applications down in this area, so we're, we're well familiar. We've gone to court on a couple of them.
Gotcha.
But just, just so, you know, I just, I questioned that, I'll leave it up to the board.
Sure.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Is our planner satisfied?
No further questions, yes, satisfied.
Any questions from the board?
Excuse me, Mr. Chang, to just answer Mr. Chang's question, the Fire Bureau review fee was paid, so there, good with that.
Okay.
Moving right along.
I have no further witnesses to present this evening.
Motion to open to public.
Anybody like to make a motion to open to the public?
Motion to open to the public.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, somebody?
Come on forward.
Thank you. I'm not sure what procedure is.
Well, hang on before you say, have to be active. And I need to have you affirm...
Okay.
...to the record, and to affirm that that's going to be able to be returned, tonight?
Yes.
Yes, you need your full name and your address on the record, please.
Okay.
And just give your voice up, please.
Just speak into the microphone.
Okay.
Yes, hold the microphone up a little higher.
This one or this one?
I need to be, they all work.
Okay. Devora Phillip, 118 Larrabee Boulevard.
I'm sorry, your last name?
Phillip, P-H-I-L-L-I-P.
Okay, thank you, proceed.
I guess we are directly behind, we live directly behind the proposed area.
Speak into the microphone till we...
I'm sorry. We reside on Lot 6. We bought this home about a year and a half ago. We very much enjoy the neighborhood. We like the privacy, we like the quiet. When we bought it, we were happy that there were woods behind us. I don't know if we have any claim, but we were, I guess, just really disappointed to hear that the lot behind us, which we were told was not buildable, is now going to be developed. I'm not really asking for a variance, just explaining how we felt as homeowners with the understanding that the lot behind us was going to stay wooded, as we were told that it was not going to, as we knew that it didn't conform to buildable standards. Just going to put that out there.
Do you happen to know the size of your lot?
What's the size of my lot?
It looks like it's pretty comparable to this one.
Yes, it is pretty comparable. I think it's 17 and a bit.
Which lot are you?
Right behind it, Lot 6, they are.
Lot 6.
I have the, if I may, and this is, Allison did the research, Lot 6 says area is 15,050 square feet, and the floor area is 2,632 square feet, and four-bedroom home. Does that sound accurate?
Fairly accurate.
That's from tax rules?
According to the tax, it's a 17 square feet lot. Additionally, we didn't build this house, we bought it ready as this, you know.
I need to have you affirm that you got that.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Joseph Phillip, 118 Larrabee.
I need you to affirm that you officially have your name on the record.
Yes.
That's Joseph.
Yes.
Yes, you may proceed, sir.
We bought this house existing as it is, as my wife just said, that we knew that the standards in Howell are that the peace and quiet and suburb, rural. We actually lived on Lakewood until now. We have a small family of four kids, and we decided to move out of the city of the congestion. We came to Howell, we wanted a peace and quiet, and then all of a sudden, like this note in the mail that someone was applying for building a house. I contacted my, the potential buyer, adjacent to the slot, proposed lot, and he had told me originally that he would, he has a very small lot, if I, Mr. Tosh's house?
This is, this is by Helen Tosh.
Right, Helen Tosh, right. So he's told me that it's a very small lot to him, and he would, he would enjoy to buy this lot, to add his property, just to have a bigger lot.
This is Helen Tosh, who's that?
Not Helen Tosh. Helen Tosh's house was sold.
Okay, sure.
Someone, Mr. Reiner.
Okay.
And Mr. Reiner had told me this, that he would, since the lot is not buildable, he would just buy it as a extension, a journey to his lot.
Who is Mr. Reiner?
Mr. Reiner's the buyer for the house. Helen Tosh's house, Helen Tosh's house is on the contract. I don't know the number, it's the one to the corner.
Lot 3, right?
Lot 3, I guess, yeah. Adjacent to the proposed lot.
I mean, Mr. Troply, I mean, well, this is something we could, as, yeah.
Well, let me, let me just... Put something out there. Mr. Chairman, you've heard that the applicant did not, in fact, serve additional owners around there with buy-sell letters. I mean, generally speaking, I've not seen it done too often with these kinds of applications, but there's a concern tonight that there may be someone who's interested in purchasing this lot. At least that's the representation that's being made. So I don't know whether or not it would be appropriate, and perhaps counsel would like to take a brief recess to discuss with his clients to see whether or not they would like to at least go through that extra stage of serving so that the board has all of that information in front of them before the board makes a decision tonight.
So would it be wise at this point to take a 10-minute break and allow time for such discussion?
Yeah, I'd recommend it.
Just one thing, Mr. Phillip, you do understand that the lot that they're developing is basically the same size as your lot?
Exactly, but we came with the knowledge that it won't be built.
Right, it's...
But I don't know what approved that has been bought, you know?
Right.
Well, adjacent property owners don't have any particular rights, you know, regarding air or space or light.
We understand that, 100%.
But as far as, you know, what you're saying is something that perhaps should be considered.
Right. I'm just saying, like, granting a variance is like going within maybe like a comfort zone, you know? So I can't demand, you can grant various, that's what the township, you know, could do. But I'm just asking for, I'm begging the township not to grant any variance.
Who was it, who was it that made the claim that it was never going to be built?
Well, we actually have papers from, from the Crest Engineers. You guys are Crest Engineers?
Yes.
And they, they said there's a lot of variances that have to, that has to be, that has to go through, and there was a potential buyer that once, had a lot in contract, and he backed out of it because of the, he knew he doesn't apply for variances. His name's Mr. Falk.
But it wasn't anyone at Howell Township that made that statement?
No, right now, I don't even know the current buyer, some of my old township. All I know is LLC, I don't know what the person is. It's also like, this guy's obviously looking to do some business here, you know, sort of like, it would be an buyer, you know, come approach me and talk to me, something, you know, here he is, like, doing business and asking for variances. I understand that's your guy's job and, you know...
Respectfully, I want...
Why don't, I got, this gentleman right here has something to say, and I think we're going to take a 10-minute break and let you guys talk.
I'm just curious, Mr. Chang, I think I just got the answer. Is this a spec house? Are they building this to sell, or is this, the owner is building the house?
I mean, I, I didn't ask that question, I can certainly ask that during the break. That's not something that, our job was to figure out what we can do with the property and get it approved. That's, so that was my goal this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't we take a break right now and do what you got to do?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now recess. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, to see if any other public would like to comment on this matter, and then I think, on behalf of the applicant, we'd like to adjourn this matter to ask, to send the, as I think Mr. Troply and I call it, NASH letters, letters to request adjacent neighbors if they want to purchase the property or to sell its property, and then get a response, and I think we can accomplish that by the April 9 hearing date. And I also want to make sure that if it's acceptable to you, that I don't have to bring back my professionals, that any questions that you have, we can ask them this evening, and if we do return, it'll just be myself.
I don't think we have a problem with that, but let me check.
I'd recommend it, quite frankly.
Well, open to the public, I think it's smart to see that through.
Right.
I mean, as far as bringing his professionals back.
Right, the public portion is still open, so I would, you know, when we're finished with the colloquy here, I would ask that if there's anyone else from the public to step forward, but the purpose of the letters will be to at least settle the issue for the board as to whether or not there are any interested takers at fair market value or not to purchase this property or otherwise, whether or not the applicant should be in a position for the adjacent lots to add property. It's a rather unusual application, but I think, you know, the question has come up, there seems to be a public concern among an adjoining, so I have no problem with, if the board has no problems and there's no further questions after the public portion is closed, to release the professionals so they don't have to come back, so Mr. Chang can report back to the board with respect to the findings, and that's basically it, and then the board can close the debate and deliberate.
Is there anyone else from the public? Come on up.
Okay, sir, before you testify, you have to be scored in, so do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth out to God? Yes, and please use the mic and keep your voice up, we need your name and address, please.
Mohammed Abazadeh, 112 Larrabee Boulevard.
Okay, sir, can you spell your last name for me, please? Okay, sir.
I just have a question. Lot 3 and this lot used to be owned by the same person. I'm wondering, my question is, do we know that both Lot 3 and this lot was bought by the same person, and they put this lot into LLC or not?
Do you own Lot 3?
The only lot that Clearview Equities owns is, oh, it doesn't own, we're contract purchaser for Lot 5. That's the only property, from my knowledge, that we are developing, I mean, yeah.
That brings me to a question. If you're a contract purchaser, is it a hardship?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
I mean, if the contract purchaser is the same person that bought the house on Lot 3 or not?
From the information that I have, I, we do not own any other lot, we don't own any lots, but we're the only contract purchaser for Lot 5. We have no interest in the past, or I guess in the future, I mean, I can't say the future, but in the past with any of the lots in this area.
So who owns Lot 3?
I could look at the tax...
Well, you served the, the list for Lot 3.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a different owner than the owner for this lot, so, you know, I think that's the only consideration the board needs to know. Different owner.
So how do we know that, that, I mean, the LLC is, that person doesn't own the LLC?
So the list of property owners, we ordered from November 21, 2017, issued by Howell Township, for Block 24, Lot 3, is Joseph and Sheri Reiner own that property.
We have it here.
Right, and you served that.
And we did, yes.
And Lot 5 is owned by Helen Tosh.
Correct.
So there's a Clearview, there's a different owners.
The Clearview is, who owns the Clearview?
Counsel, I have to defer to counsel. I don't know who owns Clearview and whether or not it's even...
I don't think it's relevant.
It really isn't relevant, sir.
The merits of the application rest on the proofs that we've provided this evening from engineering, architectural, and planning. That's, that's my position, if you agree with that or not, I defer to you.
I would say it's not relevant.
I know if they...
We've served the owners, and we've established who the owners of the lots are, I think that's all that needs to be done.
Anything else, sir?
I don't know if the Clearview is owned by the same person as Lot 3, then is this one person cannot have...
Did we not just discover it's not owned by the same person?
Correct. This client does not have any relationship with Lot 3, period, and that's what counsel for the applicant said. That's what we know, sir.
All right, thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Chairman?
Come on up. Can a guy come up twice?
Let's rack it up, pretty soon.
Thanks for the opportunity. Lot number 3 is owned by Mr. Reiner. He bought it from Mr. Tosh, who owns Lot number 5.
Can we have your name again, sir?
Joseph Phillip, 118 Larrabee. So Lot number 3 was owned by Mr. Tosh, he sold it last year in the summer to Mr. Reiner. Now he wants, he wants to sell Lot number 5 too, to this LLC. That is just clarification of what's going on.
And how, okay, thank you.
I guess, one thing I'm curious is that how, this is, we're not a court of law, but is this not hearsay? I mean, Mr. Reiner's not here.
I'm going to direct the board to just move forward. I mean, you know, we have a contract purchaser, the lots are a different ownership, and I think that's all the board needs to know.
Is that it for the public? Somebody like to make a motion that we close to the public?
I'll make a motion to close the...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The board, what do you think about, this gentleman comes back on the 9th and does not bring his professionals? Anybody have any questions that they'd like answered right now, or does anybody have a problem with the professionals not coming back?
No.
As long as he's going to do the summation, we don't need the professionals.
Professionals, they got everything they need while these people are here?
Yes, sir.
I'm good. Perfect. We're all good.
So this is tabled as far as we're concerned tonight?
Be carried with no further public notice. Two, I would, I think it should be, Mr. Chair, I think what we, we next, the next date is the 9th?
April 9.
April 9th at 7:30. Without any further public notice, this matter will be carried. The professionals will not need to be present, that is, the applicant's professionals will not need to be present. Counsel, you'll return with NASH letters.
Yep, absolutely.
And you'll make a presentation at that point in time, be prepared to sum.
Sure.
And at that point in time, the board will deliberate.
And will public be commenting, or won't have an opportunity at that year?
At this point in time, I think the public is closed. I mean, the issues are on the record, there seemed to be some concern about purchase or sell. You know, you can establish the record, you know, based on the proofs that you find.
Sure.
Or don't find.
Yeah.
The board wants to know, is anyone interested in either buying or selling this parcel to either make it more conforming, or for your clients or the owner to sell to someone?
Right, absolutely.
And that's, well, the board needs to know, and then they'll make their decision.
I'd like to add one thing to that. Just make sure you're well-versed when you come back, because if anybody brings up any questions about that one of your professionals might have to answer, want you to answer it so we could proceed, because we don't want to postpone another meeting to have one because we don't want to postpone another meeting to have one of your professionals come back.
Well, yeah, I can certainly try, yeah, I can certainly try to do that. My goal is to see if you had any other questions I could, since they're here.
Nobody has none now.
Okay.
And that's why we agreed to do this.
Okay.
But I don't want to see a delay because something comes up.
And we'll carry it again.
Unless it's really something that I can't think of.
Okay. That's fine.
Is that okay, Ron?
That's fine, as I say, I can anticipate anything other than just counsel placing the findings on the record. But we'll see where we go.
Okay.
Carry it away for now without further public notice.
Okay.
Thank you.
See you in April.
Sounds good.
Let them take the tickets and bring them back.
Yeah, because they more, smaller ones.
Thank you.
Moving right along, let's go to case BA 18-05. Donna of Lahacques, Zenovia of Lahacques. Application for Donna as applicant and attorney in fact of Zenovia Lahacques. Owner seeking a certificate of nonconformity confirming the restaurant bar is a valid pre-existing nonconforming use on premises known as block 184, lot 1501, 72 Adelphia Road.
Mr. Chairman, once the applicant places his, attorney places his appearance on the record, I'd like to just call upon Mr. Howard. Mr. Howard has done substantial research in this area. And counsel, I think you may know that. I just think that it would be important for the board to hear also
Take it in.
Our professional, who may bring this matter to, let's say, a more quicker conclusion.
Absolutely. I vote for that myself.
So counsel, if you would please.
By all means, Thomas line, Simon line, Simon, I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant, Zenovia Lahacques. I'm here with Donna Lahacques, operated the restaurant at the premises. Mr. Howard's been extremely helpful throughout the process.
Can anybody hear them? Should they be near a microphone?
There is one at the table. They sit or here's.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, to the extent I believe that the municipal official had asked for some testimony, and she's prepared to offer that concerning the history and the use of the property, even though the restaurant operation ceased for a period, she's prepared to offer testimony.
Let me swear her in this way when the time comes. Swear that the testimony, do you give this evening the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth out to God?
I do.
And your name again, please?
Donna of Lahacques.
Counsel, as you stated, that your attorney, your witness has prepared, I believe, an extensive document that Mr. Howard has reviewed, and Mr. Howard has also performed a substantial amount of research. With your permission, I'd like Mr. Howard to at least place a preamble on the record for the board's identification.
We'd appreciate that.
To the nature of this application, what the board will be considering, and the findings, at least the official findings of Mr. Howard on behalf of Howell Township.
So I want to give a little bit of background as to why we're here and ultimately what brought us here. We've received a lot of inquiries about this property in the past several months. I think it was recently listed for sale. Doing research, we noticed immediately it's nonconforming. It's a restaurant use in the ARE2 zone. That signals a lot of red flags. The township has in the past ruled somewhat inconsistently on nonconforming uses. So getting aside from this property, I'm just talking about past practices. What I've noticed is in, throughout several files, if it's a nonconforming property, the township will sometimes do what's called certificate of continued occupancy applications. They'll transfer tenancy or ownership throughout the years based on an assumption or based on some research that a property is pre-existing nonconforming. The definition of pre-existing nonconforming, and the planner and the attorney can kick me anytime I, you know, veer off too much, is ultimately a use that was permitted before a change that makes that use not permitted. In this case, we have a restaurant in a residential and a farming zone. Ultimately, what I've seen in the files is sometimes we'll do these change of tenancies with the assumption that there's a pre-existing nonconforming and that it is legally existing. What this does is it hurts the township's position to be able to review these files completely. Ultimately, the MLUL, the municipal land use law, gives a zoning officer one year from the change of ordinance that makes something nonconforming to rule and issue a certificate of pre-existing nonconformity. That's one year. So if the ordinance changes today for something to become nonconforming, I have one year for an owner to come in and petition me for a certificate. After that one year, the jurisdiction solely rests with the zoning board of adjustment. So when we're looking at nonconforming uses where ordinances has changed in the 70s, 60s, or even two years ago, I no longer have the ability to issue an opinion on that nonconforming use and its legality. Ultimately, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. When I do a CCO application and I review it and I see that the use is not conforming, any type of approval I give at that time to me and to the township is somewhat of a certification of that nonconformity. If I don't have the certificate from the zoning board, or it is not within a year of the zoning change, I do not have the ability, I do not have the power nor the jurisdiction in my position to issue any type of approval. So this is the first case that's come in front of the board since I've been here for a pre-existing nonconformity. We're going to see that a lot more because, A, the MLUL backs me up in this process, and it gives the zoning board an opportunity to hear the case, to have proofs put on. The burden of proof is solely with the applicant in this circumstance. They have to come and prove their nonconformity. If they cannot prove it, they do, they do have the option of applying for the use variance to approve the use that's there, therefore they can continue it in the future. Additionally, it gives the zoning board an opportunity to review site plan elements for underdeveloped sites or sites that have issues on them, and we can address things like lighting, parking, landscaping, and things like that. So that's general theory. The reason we're here tonight is because we do have a property that is in the ARE2 zone that is, does not permit restaurants or bars in any type of the use. So what I did, I researched, my job here is to present when this property became nonconforming or when the zoning changed to make this nonconforming. I believe that's the applicant's responsibility at this point to then prove that they were there before whatever change in the zoning or the creation of the zone that made this nonconforming. So if I may, I'll just start really quick pulling up some past zoning maps. In the Department of Community Development, this is going to be up on your screen, we have the great ability, we have some great resources of some historic zoning maps. This is the first one. The property is located right outside Farmingdale, between West Farms Road. It's to the east of West Farms Road. It's about this area. This white area on this zoning map is agricultural. I could tell you from the ordinance, this is 1957. This is our very first zoning map. From 1957 through 1979, there were a couple iterations and changes to the ordinance, but restaurants were never permitted in the agricultural zone. So that's first. This is 1964. Here's the borough of Farmingdale. Here's West Farms Road. The property is here. The shaded area is industrial. I can confirm to you, based on the ordinance at the time, restaurants and bars were not permitted in the industrial zone in 1964. Next is 1979. Again, right outside Farmingdale. This is the first zoning map with parcels shown on it. The parcel is right here. It's this little L-shaped parcel. This is a little bit hard to read, but this is zoned ARE1. And again, restaurants and bars were not permitted at the time in the ARE1.
And this is 79?
1979.
When did the bar go there? Does anybody know that?
That's, that's the piece they're going to fill in.
Oh, okay.
So I'm giving you the history of the zoning.
Okay, so go ahead.
We then go on to 1989, and this will go quicker because you'll see a pattern develop. Right outside Farmingdale, we are still in the ARE1 zone. This is 1989. Again, restaurants and bars not permitted at the time. This is 1995. We are now in this general area again. ARE2 is the zoning. There was a change between 1989 and 1995. Again, ARE2 does not allow restaurants and bars. The final map I will show is the current zoning map, which is governing the township right now. And again, here's the parcel. And the property is still zoned ARE2. And again, restaurants and bars are not permitted in the zone. So ultimately, to satisfy the township, the applicant will have to prove that the bar restaurant existed before 1957, which is our first ordinance, which would have been the ordinance that specified that restaurants and bars could not be at that location.
Thank you. Counsel, I think we'll turn it over to you now for further testimony set forth.
In order for the applicant to meet its burden?
Okay.
If you would, please.
So Donna, when did you first operate a restaurant at the premises?
We purchased the property in 2004. We had moved into Howell back in 1997. I raised my four kids here. We were living here, enjoying the township. And I was working in Brooklyn. I'm an attorney, I was working in Brooklyn. And we just decided that we wanted to open up a restaurant in the area would make it easier for me to be home with the kids and stuff. So we purchased the property. It had been a restaurant and a bar, because it was a liquor license, which is ironic that we're the first people to come here to get a continuing certificate, because we actually have the first liquor license that was issued in Howell in 1936. So the property had been a restaurant bar. It was a restaurant bar when we purchased it. It was edge of town. Prior to that, it had been owned by, let me see who it was. I think Blewett, John Blewett, as the edge of town. Before that, it was owned by T. Ali Memorial Corporation. It was known as the Double J Bar. That was in 1981. From 1940 to 1981, there was a council meeting on June 28, 1940, that showed a consumption license owned by Blue Moon Inc. on Adelphia Farmingdale Road. That was, 72 Adelphia Road is the address of the property. Prior to that, there was a council meeting the minutes of October 7 of 1939 that showed a transfer of inventory or liquors from Patsy Mayo to Blue Moon Inc., Blue Moon Inn. So it was known as the Blue Moon Inn back in 1939. In 1936, there were council meeting minutes referring to Patsy Mayo and a consumption license owned on Adelphia Farmingdale Road. So it's been an operating bar restaurant since 19, at least 1936. I believe it's even before then, because I have pictures, well, I had seen pictures in the restaurant that showed horse-drawn carriage. I don't, don't know when that was. But, but there are records that it was in existence as a restaurant bar from 1936. So, which is before all of the zoning rules went into effect. So we've been looking to, we operated the restaurant from 2004 till about 2006. I was unable to keep operating it, I think, or maybe it was 2008. And so I had a manager come in and operate it. He operated it for a few years. In 2012, we had to close it. And we've been trying to sell it since then. It's been on the market. We've been putting it in the newspaper. We've hired brokers to sell it because of, I guess, because of the economy, whatever. It wasn't, we weren't able to sell it. Now, there are people that are interested in purchasing. As Mr. Howard stated, he's had some people approach him regarding, regarding the place and questioning what the issues were with the zoning. So I'm just looking to see if we can just get a certificate showing that it's a continuing use.
You've renewed the liquor license there each year, correct?
Oh, yes. Every year, we renew the liquor license.
You've maintained commercial insurance on the property?
Yes. We've paid the taxes for the commercial property. We've maintained, like you said, the insurance, the liquor license, ABC has fully approved everything.
And you marketed for sale as a, as a bar restaurant?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Mr. Troppoli?
Yes, counsel just covered the last question. I just wanted to clarify that the property has been marketed as a combination restaurant bar? And in other words, that's how.
Throughout, since they.
Throughout, okay.
Since 2000.
And just to cover this issue, although it's fairly obvious, it was never your intention to abandon the restaurant use, is that correct?
No, absolutely not.
Or give up the bar license? That was not your intention at all?
No, not at all.
So the only thing we have here is mere non-use of the restaurant and bar, but we don't have any intention to abandon. So it's always been your intention to either operate the bar and restaurant by yourself or to sell it to someone as a complete package. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and, Mr. Chair, the reason I put that on the record, because, you know, there were some issues involving abandonment, which I don't want the board to feel that mere non-use constitutes abandonment. It does not. That's not what the case law says. The case law says that it would have to show an intention to abandon. And I think the board, and from what Mr. Howard said here, can draw a fairly strong inference that there was no intention to abandon that particular use.
Just to bring the board up to speed as well. The ordinance up until last week did have a timeline for abandonment that said any non-use of a nonconforming use over 365 consecutive days deemed it abandoned. The council has chosen to revise that ordinance to become consistent with case law. That was done at the last council meeting last Tuesday. So if you're not familiar with the goings of council, that has since changed and is now properly accurate in the ordinance. So it does not affect this property. There has been no, from the township's perspective, no intent to abandon.
Mr. Troppoli, do you feel that the statements the applicant has just made about 1939 and conversation in different meetings, does that constitute proof that satisfies you?
Well, I'm not a voting member, but I will tell you that the proof is persuasive, I think. You have the proof directly from Mr. Howard, who has researched township records, and he verifies that what has been testified to by the applicant is in fact consistent with what's in the record. So yes, I'm satisfied as an attorney that the proofs have been made and that there's no intention to abandon and that it's been an open and consistent use which well predates zoning here in Howell Township.
And Mr. Troppoli's correct. The liquor license records came directly from the clerk's office. They maintain the liquor license and all the records. So this is a township document, a public document, that the applicant has. We've reviewed it, and we are convinced that it's accurate and depicts that it has been there since the 30s.
So.
I'll just, I'll add, I'll add as well, since we did write a report about it, that from our perspective as planners, we were mostly concerned about that abandonment issue, given the fact that it hasn't been in use. But as Mr. Troppoli clarified, it's really not continuous use that's the issue. It's continuous intention to use the property in that manner. And it's, and the use has never been interrupted, to your knowledge, right? It's always been a bar and restaurant. There's never been any other use associated with that building or?
Not that I know of. As far as I know, it's been a restaurant bar for a long time.
Yeah, so if it's been in, you know, continued use, if there's no intention to abandon, which I think has been proven by the effort you still put in to maintain the property and keeping the licenses and all of that, you know, we are satisfied with those proofs on our end. I just want to add one thing, just if the board is going to do this, if it is going to become kind of a thing that the board's doing in these kind of matters, it's really only what is on the property at the time. You know, if anyone comes in to expand, you know, like the site planning stuff, like lighting, landscaping, that's fine. But really, this only guarantees the use as it is at the time. If there's ever an expansion of intensity, it's a different story.
Mr. Chair, one further thing. Should the board issue the certificate of nonconformity? Doesn't waive or any other permits that are needed? Any type of building permits or any type, as, as the planner said, any other type of use? If they're going to do expansion or something, they would be back to the board?
Mr. Howard?
I don't have anything else to add. They hit on the, the expansion part. It'll be my job, if somebody comes in with an expanded footprint or some second story on the building, I'd be sending them back here, because it is, if you issue the certificate, it is a legally existing nonconformity. Any expansion requires the D2 variance. So it still falls into that. It's just really permitting that legal use going forward.
Mr. Troppoli?
Ready for a motion?
For the public.
Gentlemen have questions?
Open to the public.
Public.
Oh, I don't know.
We sit open to the public. Somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody? No one, no one coming forwards who want to make?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, what have we got to say, gentlemen? Anybody got a question, comment?
I'd like to put a few comments in. I came down here in 1972, and I owned a bar. And I went to the bar you're talking about many times. And there were numerous elderly customers at the time that would always talk about the blue, was it ball?
Blue Moon.
Blue Moon.
Yeah.
Bar. And I heard about it, heard about it, must have heard 500 stories about it. And I believe that that place was open so far back, maybe before I was born, that it went in pre-existing nonconforming, but it was granted by the township. And I don't consider the place to be abandoned by any means, because you kept the insurance in force and you continued to pay for the liquor license. If you didn't do that, then maybe, you know, I might look at it in a different light. But I agree that it's not abandoned. I also agree that if you're gonna do any expansion, you'd have to come back to the zoning board if you wanna enlarge it, or whoever you sell it to.
Of course.
Would have to come back for the septic tank, and if you change the size of the building, the park, and the whole nine yards. So, I mean, I'm 100% sure that, that we could grant a certificate of nonconforming for that particular property. I mean, I know that property for damn near 50 years. So I know it went back way before that, and I heard Mr. Howard's testimony, who verified it. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve this application.
Thank you. I'll second it. And all the proofs of this establishment's origin, sort of origin, but existence over the years as a bar and a restaurant, and as was said, all the documentation necessary to keep it in that category has been held. So I second this.
Roll call, please.
Mr. O'Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Oroscow?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Chairman Posh?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to add one thing.
Thank you.
In order to sell it fast, put the liquor license up for sale, and then keep the restaurant and open it up as some kind of a restaurant would bring your own. Because to sell the two together is gonna be a tough chore.
I tried.
You tried that, and you couldn't get any taken?
Tried.
What kind of license is it? Is it a broad C?
Yeah, it's a broad C.
Well, that's the best license there is.
Yeah, and I know.
The problem is, is I guess financing overall, you can't finance it because you can't put a lien against it. So you need somebody who's got cash to buy the license, and then they can buy the property.
Well, I think it could be a very successful place if it had really good food. And, I mean, you don't need the liquor license. The liquor license, you know, unfortunately, because I had a liquor license, it brings problems. Even though there's more profit in it, but it has problems. So that's just my opinion. Congratulations. I hope you sell it. I'd like to see it open. I could go over there and eat something.
And my understanding is there is no liquor licenses available in Howell at this time. And there are?
That's correct.
Certain people looking for it. Not mentioning any supermarkets, but?
I thought there was another one, also for sale.
There is one for sale, but it's so high-priced, nobody wants to buy it. And the only time a new license is issued is like if a hotel comes in or a large restaurant, that's 50% food, then they could give them a liquor license. But that hasn't happened. I think it happened with the Texas Roadhouse. They got a liquor license. But it depends on what your future plans are. But I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
If you know anybody.
Good luck.
Good luck.
I'll keep my ears open.
Any further business before the board?
Any further business before the board?
None.
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 Let's wrap this thing up. Meeting adjourned.
No, we need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Now it is.
You're welcome so much, Scott.